Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, January 21st, 2014 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Historic Zoning Commission. This is the first meeting of the year. We're certainly happy to be here. Ms. Davis, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we have a quorum and we can conduct business. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 13th, 2013. It seems to me like that was a long time ago. It was.
It was.
Forgot where you all looked at.
You should have been provided with a copy of the minutes. I have reviewed them. I hope you have reviewed them. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the August 13th, 2013 minutes?
Mr. Chairman, there's no correction. I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have one item of new business. Robert, I'll ask you to present this and we'll take it under consideration.
Okay, thank you, Chair McCross. Item we have today, the property is located at 435 East Main Street. The picture of the house is on the screen above you. It's located on the north side of East Main Street, about midway between North Manny Avenue and North Highland Avenue. The house was built around, excuse me, 1893 in this architectural style of colonial revival, Queen Anne's style of architecture. It's got a massive arched porch with balustrade, Chicago school and Palladium windows. It's a two-and-a-half-story brick structure with a hip roof. And it is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. What the applicants want to do is replace, they're having some problems with the energy efficiency in the windows on the third floor. And they are proposing to replace the windows on the third floor of the house. And what they're detached, I have some photographs in your agenda package, plus I have a brochure from the contractor, American Home Design, is undertaking the project to propose this change. And looking through the brochure, and I've talked to the applicants about this, the windows they're proposing are vinyl window. And if the contractor, I think the contractor or the applicants can talk to this, that's what they're looking to replace with. They say the style of the architecture of the windows, the shape and everything will be the same, but they're not going back with the wooden windows that's existing on the house right now. So that's what the commission is going to be looking at today. If you have any questions, the applicants are in the audience, so is the contractor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Would either the applicant or the contractor like to explain a little bit more about why you're wanting to go to vinyl windows?
I actually brought a piece of our window. Our windows are designed to look more like wood windows, actually, but they are 100% pure vinyl resin.
Excuse me, would you just put your name and address for the record, just so we have it on the record?
Jamie Bush, design consultant with American Home Design.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem, sir. But we design our windows to actually look like wood windows, but we have the benefit of it being maintenance-free. And they are energy-efficient. Our frames are shaped more like crown molding, like you see on the exteriors of homes. So from a distance, it really does look like a wood window. And from the third, being it's on the third story, we, Ms. Deaton and I felt like it, from that distance, you wouldn't be able to really tell whether it was vinyl or not. So I guess that's where we stand at.
Could we look at that, please?
Yes, sir. Just pass it over.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Well, they've changed, haven't they? The looks have changed.
I'd like to ask, while they're looking at the window, so you're going to be able to replace what I call the chapel-style windows?
Exactly.
They're curved at the top?
They look exactly, the arched windows?
Yeah.
Palladium windows, what we're referred to as?
Good.
And then the other ones are double hungs.
Okay. So everything's going to look just as it looks now?
It'll look exactly the same.
Thank you.
Of course, there was a lot of rotted wood and things like that, and so we're going to have to be replacing wood around it and just fix the gaps around it and all that, so...
Is this low-e glass?
Yes, sir. Energy-efficient with the argon gas?
Just out of curiosity, what, how much difficulty do you have with these vinyl windows with mold buildup?
We have chemical in it. It's called Tie-Shield. It's a titanium dioxide that prevents it from molding.
Okay.
Like you see, if you're referring to maybe like siding or something like that?
Right.
It's a big problem with siding. We have the same chemical in our siding as well as the windows that prevent it from molding, mildewing, and sun fading, oxidizing.
I have a question for you. It seems that, you know, the bad name that vinyl siding has gotten, for one thing, is how shiny it is.
Mm-hmm.
In comparison to wood. And I noticed up close, this has a sheen to it, too. Is there a matte finish on vinyl windows that you can get?
No, ma'am, that's all, that's what we have. We don't have any other options for that.
Okay.
It's designed to keep it from oxidizing, color fading.
The sheen is?
Uh-huh. That's what it's for.
I didn't know that.
Uh-huh.
What's the total number of windows we're going to be replacing on the third floor?
I believe we have, I think it's 10, 10 windows. 12 windows, yep. 10 double hungs and the other ones are the arch windows, the palladium windows.
When you repaint the wood that you're going to replace to make the windows solid, what type of paint will you be using? Would it be matching the window or the paint that's already there?
The paint that's already there. We'll do it as close to it as we can get.
Does your, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if you know if that's a satin or a semi-glass paint?
I believe semi-gloss is what they use.
Okay, so my only thought is there that that semi-glass will come pretty close to the window.
Are the windows that are in place the original windows?
Yes, sir.
And the window glass is the original glass?
Single pane?
Right.
Yes, sir.
And that's old glass?
It's old glass.
What are your intentions to do with the existing windows, the glass, as you take?
As we take them out?
Right.
Whatever, if you wanted to keep them, the installers could stack them up for you and keep them, or we usually just dispose of them. We clean and haul the area.
Does your company sell wooden windows as well, or just vinyl?
No, sir. Just vinyl.
And what brand are they?
Preservation.
That's the brand name?
Any other questions or discussion?
I was just going to ask to the applicants, I guess my client to the applicants, have you investigated repairing the windows with anybody at all?
No.
No?
Thanks for your question.
Have you looked into wooden windows at all as a possibility, compared prices?
No. It was my understanding that wooden windows were more expensive.
And what's the condition of windows on the first floor and the second floor?
They're fine.
They're good. And they're original also?
So the problem is primarily maintaining windows at the higher level?
Yes, sir, on the third floor.
I was trying to recall in my member bank, and it's not becoming clear in my member bank, but I was, you know, there is also a window that is wood, that's vinyl clad.
Right.
Am I right there? And I was just wondering, do you recall approving any of those in our zone?
I think we have approved some vinyl clad wooden windows in the past.
It seems the most recent issue was on College Street, and I think we required wood
Wooden windows that faced the street?
Street, right.
The ones that are in the back?
The white stucco house?
Yeah.
On the south side of College.
Anything that was visible from the street, I think they were requiring to be wood on that College Street address.
Which visible from the street, I think, if you put that picture back up there, I think there's only three windows that are actually visible from the street, if I remember correctly. Five, three, four, five.
Well, the ones, this is fronting Main Street, and then there's the west side, which you can see, which is further down on my, yeah, right here. This is a west view from the alley, which is close, but you can probably see these from Main Street. And then there's the east side, which is on the opposite side, and I don't think I took a picture of that one. So it'd be the south side, and the east and the west side that would be visible.
It would be possible to get a wooden sash window like this that was double painted with low-e glass, is it, would it not?
Yeah, there's Anderson, I think, still sells wood windows. Vinyl wood clad, actually, is what they sell. They're about $2,000 a window, but they are still available.
And how long have these windows been in place?
Her windows, existing? I guess since it's been built.
Yes.
They're original.
1995.
116 years.
They're falling out of, they're falling out. There's a lot of wood replacement that needs to be done and...
So the wood held up for 116 years?
Yeah, it actually did, yeah. They used good wood back then.
What's the life expectancy of the vinyl?
We give a lifetime, I've explained our warranties to you, we give a lifetime installation, lifetime product, lifetime material, lifetime glass breakage, and lifetime against seal failure, the gas that leaks out of it. We give a true lifetime warranty on it.
Whose lifetime?
The owner's, and it transfers one time.
Okay.
So it's actually a double lifetime warranty, it transfers. And I think that was one of her, in case you ever sold it, or something, that the warranty would go with it.
Well, this is an issue that I think this commission has dealt with numerous occasions, perhaps different building fabric, replacing original material with a modern material because it's cost-effective and because it would appear to outlast the existing. And I certainly don't doubt that the windows that are there have been there that long, they probably need to be replaced. It's just a matter for this Historic Zoning Commission to make a determination about whether or not they want to approve switching to a vinyl product or requiring that they go back with a wooden product. And I would agree with you that in all probability, those windows are made of clear heart poplar, which any new windows that you get, wooden windows, are not going to be made of anything that's that durable. They're going to be fur or something else. So just being honest, that's fact. They're not going to hold up like the poplar windows have held up. So the commission needs to consider that, I think, in terms of what they're willing to accept.
Well, Mr. Chairman, here's my thought so far, is that being that we have approved vinyl, wooden, vinyl clad windows in the zone before, and looking close up at the sample, I don't think on the third floor that we're going to be able to tell the difference. So I don't have a major problem with it.
I guess my question would be, you know, if we decide to accept this, do we need to make some stipulation, you know, I don't know if we can say only on the third floor. I'm just concerned about how we've required wooden windows on first and second floors, especially on East Main Street. How we handle this?
Anybody else?
Give, do you have any?
I agree with you. I think that if we, I mean, where do you draw the line? The last time we had this issue, we said no to vinyl. We said it may need to be wood.
Well, we said no vinyl on front and main.
Front and side that was visible from the streets or sidewalk.
Every case is, every instance is a different case. I mean, that house was a two-story house, and we're talking about the third floor here. I'm not saying we should do it or we shouldn't do it, but every case, we're grappling with each, every case is different in whether you do or you don't. There's reasons why you're doing that, and that's what needs to be documented, is why you're going to do it or why you're not going to do it. And that's, I don't know if you're setting a precedence, but at least you're explaining why you're doing it or why you're not doing it.
Can you tell us the instance where we did approve it?
There's a house on East Main Street, right? Not exactly sure what address it is. It's on the corner, maybe Second Avenue. It was a vinyl house, and it's been done just right after I got on board here. I think they did vinyl, they replaced vinyl, because it was a vinyl house anyway, and they replaced vinyl with some vinyl windows and doors.
Would that house have been contributing to the National Register? Probably not.
I don't think it was.
So that's a difference.
And that's about the only one I can think of off the top of my head.
How long ago was that? Do you have an idea?
It's probably 10 years ago. It was, you know, early in the early 2000s.
I'm with David. I think we need to realize it's going to be case by case. Every situation is different. When we have homeowners that want to put money back into their property, I think we just, that's what we need to be looking at. What's good for the area? What's going to keep people in this area? You know, if we say we're not going to allow vinyl, no vinyl in this Historic District, what are you going to have? You're going to have people moving out. So you've got to have limitations on what you're going to improve and what you can't. We're talking the third floor. We're not talking the whole front side. We're talking the third floor. And so with that being said, I approve, I think this is something that, you know, we should do as a board to make sure that we're taking care of these homeowners, but we're still doing the right thing, and we're doing it case by case.
I can tell you, going to the wood replacements with those chapel windows is out of sight. Because when we replaced our windows, we did the wood, but we didn't do the chapel windows. We didn't have as many as they have here, but we had probably, I think, four that I can think of right on hand, but we just left those alone, to let the cold air come through those.
Well, I think you mentioned $2,000 a window?
For wood windows, yeah. Anderson's.
And what is the cost on these?
These are 800 apiece installed. Of course, she got some, she wanted to get a wood trim on the inside, but I don't think that affects what y'all's doing. But we have a wood trim interior, Foxwood, it's real pretty, it's got a reddish tone to it. She's going to fix, it's an attic area right now, but she's going to fix it up.
I just wanted so it could be fixed.
So it could be fixed, I bet you.
I think it might be worth actually getting an actual estimate for wood windows. You know, we're just dealing with hearsay at this point. I replaced some wooden windows with wooden, a different brand. They weren't Anderson. They were, I can't call the name of them, but they weren't outrageously priced. I mean, and that's in the last five or six years, so...
Were they comparable energy efficiency?
Yeah, they were, you know, double hung with argon. They were smaller windows, they were about kitchen windows. But I think that one other thing that we have to consider is the National Registered District, the fact that these are historic houses and that what the Historic District strives to do is retain that integrity of materials and workmanship and design and feeling. So we have to speak to that as well. I mean, that's one of the things that lends value to the properties, is that the historic integrity.
Well, Secretary of Interior Standards, which are the backbone that all state decisions and federal decisions are made regarding changes like this, would their recommendation would be that you go back with the original material? Now, there are exceptions to that, but I'm confident, I don't think that going to these vinyl windows would change the National Register status of these, of this house. That would be the standard that they have established, is to, if it's wood, stick with wood. Certainly, I don't know of any place where they advocate vinyl, not that there's anything wrong with vinyl. Those are just the standards. Our standards are based on the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation Projects. So that's something to consider. What are you, Jim, what are you asking for?
Well, I would suggest getting a, deferring and getting an estimate for wood and see
Jim, let me ask you, when you're talking about the feel of the wood, since there have been some windows approved that are wood, that are vinyl clad, which means the outside of the window is vinyl, I'm not sure that I understand the difference in feel or visual feel or...
Well, the word feeling is a word in the language for the National Register. It has to do with association, not the touch. So it's a different sort of, you know, what the neighborhood is like. So that's, that's how I mean that word. But, and I think, well, to Robert's memory, it was on a vinyl house that we've done that. And I don't, there may have been some others, I just don't recall.
Well, I think we also need to make note of what Kurt has said about the homeowners and keeping our good homeowners in the district. And also, Paul, from what you've said, that you don't feel that this would take this house off the National Register.
Right.
But, Give, I mean, I understand what you're saying, too. Maybe we are setting a precedent.
How long have the Deetons owned this home?
Since 1986, inherited from my father, embodied in 54.
Okay.
Two years.
You've been good stewards of a historic resource. That makes a difference to me.
Well, we do appreciate the whole concept of preservation, and we're not rabid. We're here to work with you, and we want to play his best for the district, and all at the same time, we were looking at this as being something more cost-effective. And we enjoy working with the company. They do a really great job, and it was just a very comfortable decision on our part. And then, you know, after the fact, we had to realize that there could be issues.
After we sold the job, after Deaton and I, we didn't really realize that there was a historical deal that had to be approved. And when I turned it in, my installation manager, Joel Cron, said, hey, did you realize that that's in a historical district? And then he reached out to Mr. Lewis, he reached out to Mr. Lewis, and just to follow the natural steps that needed to take place. That's how this comes about.
The Chair cannot make a motion. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the windows as submitted.
We have a motion from Mr. Becker that the windows be approved as submitted. Is there a second?
And before you go to the second, that, Ms. Brenda, that we insert Mr. Wade's comments and the Chairman's comments regarding these windows in the National Historic Register.
I have a second from Mr. Wade. I would like to make a suggestion for someone to perhaps make an amendment, since I can't do that. But I would like for, I would like to know that the existing windows will be carefully removed and that that glass will be stored and made available for reuse.
Okay.
Elsewhere in this house or by some other historic site that is in need of glass that would be comparable to the glass that's in there, because it's very expensive, and finding original glass like that is very difficult.
Okay.
And I would like to know that those original parts and pieces were saved for reuse.
Okay.
That's, that's just a suggestion, if anybody wants to offer an amendment.
I would like to make an amendment.
Can you repeat that exactly?
I can. I would like to make an amendment that the original... I would like to make an amendment that the original glass and framework be removed and kept in, kept in whole, so that it can be reused either by the owners, or we have lots of historical, I guess they're called, preservation, restoration businesses in the area, I know Nashville has a big one, that they be reused.
We have a motion.
And not disposed of.
Do you have a garage that we can put those in, a place where we can?
Have an attic.
Well, yeah, we can take them out, keep them in the attic, right where they're at.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, honor an amendment. Does anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so we'll be voting on the amendment. And the amendment says that the original windows and glass will be salvaged and held, and we may, through Robert's offices, make people aware of the fact that such glass is available for someone who might need it. All those in favor of that amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Noes? If the amendment carries, we're back on the original motion, which is to approve the windows, the vinyl windows, to match the originals as presented to us. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed?
No.
We have recognized one no, and the motion carries. Hope you understand that, that the no vote and the questions that have been asked are relative to our concern about establishing a precedent of replacing original historic fabric with modern fabric that bears no resemblance to it other than shape.
Right.
That, that's the nature of the concern, and I think, in this case, because of the, the level of it and the exposure of it, and the long record of ownership of the owners and the efforts that they have made, that the commission saw fit to make an exception in, in, in their, in their interest. I think that's, I think that's what we're doing.
That's good.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert, do we have any staff reports or other business?
No, I don't have anything, Chairman.
Nor do I.
Nobody has a thing. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We'll probably, I take that back, we'll probably have a site plan next month for, for the Episcopal Church. Planning Commission is going to be looking at it this month, and the next step would be to come to the Historic Commission, so. We should, we should be meeting in very, very soon, probably the next month.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.